We're doing a work session.
Fair enough. I'll, I'll just jump in if that's alright.
Think that's appropriate.
Perfect, thanks. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Appreciate Planning Commissioners coming a little early tonight for this work session. At the last meeting, we had done kind of a Planning Commission 101 that covered some, at a, at a high level, statutory creation of a Planning Commission for statutory towns, what some of those roles and responsibilities are. And without rehashing all that information, what we kind of gathered was that, kind of the next step was looking at some of the more specific case types and what the Planning Commission does with individual cases and kind of where some of the latitude is. And so we put together this next work session packet of information to do an overview on site plans. Site plans being one of the more common application types that comes before the Planning Commission. And likely, as we kind of continue through this path of work session materials and reviewing these different types of cases, we'll, we'll bring the others forward at future meetings. But we started with the site plan review based on Planning Commission direction and it being in one of our primary case types that we see in a small community. So, kind of diving into this, Patty, do you, would you be able to put the presentation slides on the screen as well? So this information's in your packet. And we'll put it on the recording here as well. So we kind of referred to this as the Planning Commission Site Plan or Planning Commission 101 Site Plan Review Procedures. To give you kind of a brief precursor here, what we're going to do is go through, the way the slideshow was presented includes information from your land use code regarding the procedures and requirements for a site plan. We pulled at least one section and I'll highlight that when we get there from the general application procedures that we covered last week. Just because I think one of the primary questions we heard the Planning Commission ask was, tell us about conditions of approval, when they're appropriate, what do we look at? And so I, I pulled that out of the general procedures to make that a part of this presentation tonight. You think, can you close that sidebar? Yeah, perfect. There we go. Awesome. So, we started with chapter fifteen in our land use code. Article two is the application procedures. And at section fifteen dash two dash one twenty is where site plan procedures picks up. So, the, this section of the land use code for site plan procedures consists of four parts. The purpose and applicability, the procedures for a site plan, the findings for approval, which is what the Planning Commission looks at. And then there's a section on amendments to approved site plans, which is kind of a post decision action as the code is, is laid out. So we've broken this presentation out into these component parts. And it's kind of based on function for how the Planning Commission acts in this capacity. Next slide. So, purpose and applicability. This is straight out of the land use code. I'm not going to read it word for word, but in general, the highlight is for, site plans are applicable to apply for a building permit. And for multifamily, commercial and industrial developments. So residential, single family doesn't require site plan review. Residential is covered via the subdivision plat where it lays out the lots of blocks. And then individual residential properties submit a plot plan for that residential construction or an addition, expansion, remodel, things like that. So the, the site plan review criteria is specifically for commercial, industrial, multifamily projects. It's for all new projects. And it's also for exterior modifications to an existing building in downtown commercial districts or, or C2 zone district is our downtown district. That was added in the last code update because there's specific downtown guidelines relative to architecture and controls and, and design themes for the downtown. So if a building is changing, that was added to cover that component. And one of the other conditions is for a site plan or a threshold for site plan review is if there's significant changes to a site, including access and circulation on the site. So substantive changes, changing access and circulation, building modifications in the downtown and all new commercial multifamily developments are subject to site plan review. I guess that covers the applicability. Actually, before we jump too quick, the purpose. The purpose is to, is to verify that those proposed commercial projects or remodels, expansions or changes are consistent with the applicable development criteria. So, two components there, applicability and then the purpose, making sure that it's in compliance with the development standards. Any questions on purpose and applicability? Thank you, Patty. So, the handout number one, and we, we tried to do this kind of similar to the last presentation just for some consistency. And we included the, the handouts in the back of the packet. And we've printed hard copies that should be at your, at your seats there too. When the town updated its land use code adopted in 2022, we recognized the need for updating our application forms and, and guides that go along with those application types. Making sure that they're consistent with the adopted codes. And one of the things that we're putting together, you see it's still marked draft. But we're putting together a process flow chart and it's on the eight and a half by fourteen sheet for you there. I'd encourage you to, to reference this. It's not a final product, but it's one that we're putting together and the visualization really kind of helps navigate the flow of an application that we're going to go over here in more detail in just a moment. So, next slide, Patty. For procedure, you can see this refers to all site plan applications. They do have to submit an application. We start that application with a, with a pre-app conference. We'd like to, when someone contacts town staff and says, you know, I'm interested in this project or I'm pursuing this project. We meet with them, we listen to what they have to say and we give them guidance on these are the, these are the appropriate applications you should be following. This is the criteria. The pre-application conferences are a requirement of the, the code. So we do document, you know, what we advise in that meeting. We bounce ideas off the applicant and they do the same with us to help kind of get it dialed into what's that project I need to, you know, be pursuing to move things forward. And from that pre-application meeting, we give them that guidance so that they have a clear understanding of what's expected. And town staff has an idea of what it is that they're trying to accomplish so that we can be working on our side of things as they prepare their application materials. The next step is the, the land use application itself. We put an example of the land use application form in your packet. This was something that, we feel like this was a part of the process because we, we approached this work session in terms of, we, our assumption was no one knows how this process works. I know you guys know how it works. But we started at the top to work through the whole thing to kind of show you from start to finish what that looks like. And we included the application forms because I'm not sure that all of you have had an opportunity to use those. But you can see what it is that we're, we ask for when an application for a land use development proposal is submitted. Next slide, thanks. So this next slide, this is again, this is an excerpt from the land use code. It's copy and pasted. But what it's showing is these are the materials that are required to be submitted with a site plan application. So, and I won't go through every single one of these, but it's, it's all the drawings that are associated with a, a proposed site plan or amendments to an existing site plan. The Planning Commission usually sees the, the drawings themselves. And we actually have an example in your regular meeting packet following this work session. But you'll get those drawings. Staff is also reviewing technical documents like soils reports, traffic impact study memos. Depending on the type of project, there could be drainage associated with that, that our public works engineering team is reviewing. The building elevations, sometimes a floor plan if it's necessary to understand how the building is laid out, where the entrances are and information such as that. Materials, colors, architectural embellishments. All those are included in your site plans. Photometric plans to ensure consistency with the standards for site lighting. Spot elevations so we can verify ADA accessibility. All of that information gets submitted with a, a site plan to the extent that it's applicable. We use the pre-application meeting that we talked about a minute ago to start to identify, is there additional information that's required for staff to review that and make recommendations to the Planning Commission? We may require additional information at that time. We may also identify that some of the information may not be necessary based on the application that's being proposed. And we'll document that through our pre-application meeting conference so that we can have a clear record and the applicants have a clear record of what's required and what's not. You don't always get to see all of the documents. We can cover this here again in just a minute. But one of the things that I think is always worth pointing out is staff reviews a whole lot of information and we're going to dive into that here in just a moment. We don't always send all of that information to the Planning Commission. Some of its technical criteria, the traffic impact studies, drainage studies, flow rate calculations, plans and profiles for drainage or sanitary sewer lines and things like that. We don't expect the Planning Commission to review and comment on technical documents with technical standards. We have, that's what our professional staff does. Our public works engineering team does a lot of that. Planning department staff does some of that. And we provide you recommendations based on the information that we're receiving so that you're not inundated with three hundred page soils reports, nomographs from drainage and transportation studies and information that doesn't necessarily mean a whole lot out of the context of the Planning Commission. But town staff does review that information and gives you those recommendations based on whether it has met the standard, does not meet the standard, whether that standard was modified through a different process and how it relates to the site plan in general. And then, of course, we were here to answer questions if you have concerns over those, those more detailed topics. So then, handout number three is actually what we put in here next. And we included this specifically. This is a site plan checklist that the town staff uses. We give this to our applicants when they're submitting a site plan application. This checklist is, as you can see, quite extensive. Not all of these things on this checklist are applicable to every single project. This is handout number three. It's not in the slideshow, but it's in your handouts in the paper copy at your, at your seat there. But you can see this, this checklist is extensive and covers a, a whole variety of information. We have added to it recently. That's why it's marked draft. We're currently in the process of including additional things that Public Works Engineering is looking for on a site plan that wasn't on the previous site plan checklist. To make sure that we're capturing the right information at the start of that application process and there aren't surprises along the way. So this is a work in progress that we continue to kind of update. But this gives you a flavor for the amount of detail that, that applicants are providing and staff is collecting and reviewing prior to anything reaching the Planning Commission for, for review and consideration. I'm not sure if everyone had a, a chance to digest that site plan checklist prior to tonight's meeting. Were there any, I just want to pause a moment and see if there's any, any questions regarding the type and, and nature of the, of the information that's collected with the site plan application.
So during the pre-app meeting, is that where you determine what all is needed then in this?
We can if the applicant's ready for that. It really depends on the stage that the applicant is at when they come and meet with us.
Thinking, looking at it, I don't have a clue what much a lot of this stuff is if I were needing it, so.
Yeah.
That would be a good time to get that. Okay.
Yep, we definitely do that at pre-application meetings if the applicant is ready to have that conversation. We do find from time to time that we might have more than one pre-application meeting. If there are questions like that, sometimes the very first meeting staff learns that there's an idea for a business and they're really not ready to submit an application yet. So we do try to help guide them to, these are the types of things that your design professionals are going to put together. So that when they put their project team together with civil engineers, architects, site designers, that they, they get the right resources to the table to answer those questions so that staff has a clear, you know, complete package when we go and start our review on it.
You said this is still kind of fluid, that you guys are adding and changing things. So this is not exhaustive. And I, I ask because we get down, and I'm not picking on Lisa because she's not here to defend herself. But we get into conversations about things that it's just starts to go a layer or two layers or three layers off of a site plan. If it's not on the sheet, is it necessarily in our peer review and should we be talking about it? Or is it not that exhaustive on here? That there's still some gray area on things that maybe it's not on the checklist, but it still could be inside the purview of the Planning Commission?
Think the, the, yeah, yes and no. The, the site plan checklist is not intended to be exhaustive. It isn't intended to be pretty comprehensive and you can see that from the, the, the length of that checklist. It's five or six pages of, you know, a single line, provide this, provide this, provide this. We do go through it with applicants when we could take that application. We ask them to mark whether or not they provided it and if they think it's not applicable to explain why. And oftentimes, if it's not applicable, we do agree with that and say, yep, that's, we agree that's not required because it's not applicable on this particular project. But it, it's, it's also not intended to be limiting. This isn't the Planning Commission's checklist. This is the staff's checklist that we've created based on the things that we're looking for. And the, you know, some of the subject matter like building elevations and architectural embellishments. We require that the applicant provide that information with a site plan application. But the, the implementing the standards, if you go back to your land use code and review, what is the commercial architecture standard? It's written very generally that it's consistent or compatible with the surrounding environs, that there are earth tone colors, that the design theme is reflected on four sides of the building. An application of those standards and, and they're written very generally. I, I've seen a lot of communities do the architectural standards very differently. Some have a very prescriptive approach where it's, you know, must have, you know, twenty percent of the building facade must be this material, thirty percent must be this material. There, it can get very detailed in how those are written. For a community of Wellington's size and to allow freedom of design, I think it's, it's intentionally written very generally to imply a couple of basic principles that in fact, every side of that building that's visible to the public does have treatments on it that make it a, a quality appearance and a consistent design theme, that there's general compatibility on the site, that if you've got a trash enclosure that in your building is made of masonry block, your trash enclosure should probably reflect that same material or, or a freestanding sign. The sign base should have the same, you know, materials or compatible materials with your building architecture. So that there's a design theme reflected on the site and that that theme is not inconsistent with its surrounding environments. There's a lot of discretion in how that is interpreted and applied. And that's where the Planning Commission has a lot more say on, does that meet the general spirit and intent of those standards, which are not defined to a numeric? But it, does that feel like the right fit for the architecture? So, I'm, I'm gonna kind of cut myself off there because I could keep going down that rabbit hole. But back to, to the question of whether or not this checklist is exhaustive, no. It is intended to be comprehensive and collecting enough information to weigh if there's a measurable standard. Has it been met? If it's, it's a, a measure like architecture, that enough information is provided to where staff and the Planning Commission can understand what is being presented and make a judgment call on it. Does that meet the intent of the regulations or not?
I have sort of a follow-up question, I think, to that. Based on this checklist, it says incomplete submissions will be returned to the applicant. Also says after a site plan is deemed complete by town staff, which you just explained. You know, there may be items that aren't applicable. So, moving forward, we've had instances where there have been pieces missing from site plans that we've reviewed that are applicable. So are we then not going to receive applications moving forward that are not complete? In the sense that you say, you know, staff would deem complete? You see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I think so. I mean, w- once staff has determined that the application is complete and we're conducting our review and providing recommendations that turn into a report and documents that are submitted to the Planning Commission, we are saying that that's complete. If the question was, was there, it was, if, if there was a question as to whether or not the Planning Commission agreed that that should or should not have been included, the Planning Commission always has the ability to say, this wasn't included, this is important to us and we want to table that until we can get that information included in the, in the materials.
So then those were just instances, as you described, where staff deemed it complete and we possibly one of us or two of us had a different opinion. That's what, like, to clarify.
Yeah, I think that's probably what you're describing, yeah. And I think that's, that's a, you know, certainly if there are instances where, you know, and I, I admit, I'm guilty of this from time to time where I'm used to reviewing very technical documents with a lot of information. We sort through a lot of stuff and not all of it reaches the Planning Commission. Sometimes we understand the project in a different manner than the general public would or even the Planning Commission. With your detailed eyes and experience in, in reviewing those things, we might have seen this as, we might have inferred that when you see this, this and this, that logically that's going to result in product X. And we say, yep, that's enough for us to understand that the spirit and intent of showing that information is, is captured in this document. We can identify that, in fact, that site plan does identify enough information to follow details and, and labels that we know where that building's going to be located based on the plan. Sometimes we look across multiple plan sheets and say that information is there. It's not all in one place and consistently shown on every single page, but we, we see that there's enough there to say, yes, that satisfies the intent of demonstrating how the site plan is going to look. And we pass that through as a means of not burdening an applicant with three, four or five rounds of review. There is definitely a balance between what staff looks at and what we hang our hats on is in terms of, we're not going to accept this and schedule it for a meeting based on there's a label missing. As opposed to, we understand what's intended and we can have enough to make a recommendation on. If there's, so there, there's some discretion involved by multiple reviewers in terms of is it sufficient or not? If there's ever any questions or clarification needed, when we bring information to the Planning Commission where you want to see something more detailed than what we're passing through, we're always open to that suggestion so that we can make sure we capture what the Planning Commission needs for, for those reviews.
That was kind of why I asked. I feel like maybe in another work session down the road, since we're doing a series of these, we could look at this checklist a little bit more in depth. And there may be some things we can already say as individual commissioners that are like must haves. Or things that we definitely want to see when something comes before us. And I think that, yes, if it's just a label, for sure, that's not worth going back and forth over. But, I mean, I'm used to, worked on projects before that have had many rounds of comments. So I just want to make sure that things are as thorough and complete as possible to save the applicant from being here in front of us and then finding that one of us needs something more. So I think if we could talk about it more at some point when we're all here, that would be beneficial.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to take any of those suggestions tonight or any other night for that matter. And, and I will throw out there too, there's definitely, having been a reviewer for, for many years, there is absolutely a balance to how much an applicant is willing to put, put forth in, you know, re- revisions, resubmittals, the time it takes to, you know, and the cost of having a designer redo the same drawings, make those changes and resubmit it for, you know, some instances, you know. Two is kind of our standard for, or, or goal for your application is complete, the determination of completeness is two rounds of review is our goal. Sometimes it's three, occasionally it's more than that. When you get into fourth and fifth submittals, applicants' patience have really gone thin. And there's a balance there to how hard we push to get that last bit of information on there as opposed to, is it reasonable enough and can we explain what, what is missing and write that in as a condition of approval? And we do that from time to time. You'll probably see in your staff reports where we recommend, you know, we've identified that there's, you know, a, an element still missing or there's information that we would like to see on the final drawings, but we understand that it's, it's labeling. And we're just going to write that in as a condition of approval that we still need to see that complete on the final set. We're not going to make you resubmit and miss a whole other month's worth of time to get it on the plan set that comes to the Planning Commission.
That makes total sense. And I think we're on the same page. I think we totally want to be good partners and the more we can like, give you of like what we desire to see upfront, then the less back and forth there is, period, I think. That's all.
Yeah.
I mean, in fairness, obviously I've been on this board for a long time. Pre-Cody, that was, everything that came to this board was missing, majority of stuff on the plan. It was terrible. At least with Cody, like with, with the Twyla project on First Street, when that first came to us, Cody Flat, in his presentation said, not everything is here, but she wanted to bring the presentation today. She had everything ready except for what we really need. And it was upfront to us. We, we all knew what it was missing. And Cody told her, but she still wanted to be here. Cases like that, sometimes we just have to see it and listen and they have to come back again.
It does happen. And, and I, I've, not on that specific case, but on, on other cases in my past, probably even pre-Wellington. I've had applicants that just flat refused, I'm not going to do that, another revision on that drawing. I'm going to take it to the Planning Commission as is and take my chances. Sometimes you reach a point where you, you know, agree to disagree. Our recommendation isn't going to change based on your lack of desire to complete that. But in fairness, there was a, you know, subjective call. They said, I think this, this does meet the intent. Staff didn't agree with that. And they wanted to go to the Planning Commission and get that answer. And that's, that particular example is definitely not with this Planning Commission. It was one of my prior communities' experiences, but, and, and it was a very interesting outcome, to say the least. I won't go into the details. But it, it can happen where, you know, there's a diff, a, a difference of opinions on what the code says. And that's why we have a Planning Commission. If staff is overinterpreting something or if the applicant is saying, I, I don't think that's applicable to me, I'm going to take my chances. We try to work those matters out at a staff level, but occasionally it can't be reached. And so we do allow that application to come forward. The Planning Commission has the ability to table it to a later date to get that information if they feel it's necessary. Within some reasonable limits, you have the ability to say, you know, that's an architectural design proposal that, that staff didn't agree with, but your architectural standards don't define it down to a measurable, you know, dimension or percentage or what have you. So there is some discretion to be used by the Planning Commission. Where it's an engineering standard, that's a requirement for public safety or building life safety factors, those aren't negotiable items. And we, staff will draw a hard line on those and Planning Commission doesn't have authority to overstep those safety requirements. But the architectural design, even some of the landscaping design things are, are definitely, you know, sometimes there's more than one right answer and the Planning Commission has some discretion to say, we agree that's an acceptable approach.
So I'll admit that First Street application was one that came to mind when I was asking my question originally. And so I guess that brings another question is, so you can just decide to come in front of the Planning Commission? Without staff behind you and supportive of the application? As I was unaware, I'm not, I think that you all do a fantastic job. So I wasn't at all implying that you were the reason things were missing.
To, not to.
Not a question.
No, no, no. I think it's fair. I, I guess my, I'll, I'll explain staff's approach on like a site plan. So, on a, on a, since we're talking about site plans, I'll, I'll share my philosophy on site plans. If an applicant has a, a land use that's identified as a permitted land use, then from a site plan standpoint, their, their task in bringing their drawings forward into the Planning Commission is to, going back to the purpose and applicability statements, to demonstrate that they've met compliance with the applicable design standards. So, if they're bringing that site plan through staff and we've identified these standards aren't yet satisfied, here's, here are our comments, you should revise that plan set and, and then resubmit it for another review. Our objective as a staff is, if you're meeting the design criteria and we can say, yep, that's satisfied, our objective is to bring you a clean of, to the Planning Commission, bring Planning Commission as clean of a set of drawings as we can to say, these are all the design criteria that are satisfied. And leave only, this was a discrepancy between staff's interpretation of this, you know, landscape requirement or architecture requirement and the applicant suggested that this is what they would like to do instead of what staff thought was right. We try to bring you only those things that are solvable within the Planning Commission's purview and can be accomplished. We try to bring you only those things that are solvable within the planning commission's purview and can be accomplished in a meeting. Um, but we don't try to hold an applicant to, you have to have. Perfect drawings before you can get scheduled in the planning commission. Um, and in fairness, again, I don't, I can't recall a specific example in Wellington. Um, on a site plan, but when I've, you know, when, when I and my staff have been pushed to. We disagree with staff, you're being too hard on us, we want to take this through. Our recommendation was the site plan is not complete, it's not meeting the design standards and we don't recommend approval. In those instances, they either get tabled until they can bring it back and, and the planning commission said, yeah, we agree with staff that this needed to be on there and it wasn't, so. Go back and do it. Or planning commission has flat denied that application based on the way it was submitted and it didn't satisfy the criteria. Our staff's objective is not to recommend denials. Our objective is to, if the design criteria are being satisfied for uses that are permitted in that zone district, our objective is to present, here's an application. For a site plan that can be approved. Yeah, you're welcome. Um, so those are, those are good, um, conversations and, and discussions. It probably covered some of the things that we would have touched on later anyhow, so I. No, it's great. I think it was, it was a very genuine questions and, and good, good timeliness. Um, it'll probably save me from having to, to present them later. Um, but I, I'll continue, excuse me, I'll continue on. Through the presentation packet here. Um, so for the procedures. Review and approval, um, we just talked about a lot of the staff review, some of our philosophy and how we go about that review. And when it comes to the planning commission, again, we're, staff is trying to present. A site plan that's ready for approval. Or can be approved with some conditions like clean this up, this needed clarification. Didn't agree with that architectural style, we think this is more appropriate, please include this in your final plan set. Um, in reviewing an application for, application for a site plan, the planning commission has the ability to approve it. Approve it with conditions or deny it. We usually aim for approve or approve with conditions, denial is not anyone's first preference. So, thanks Patty. Um, so this was the slide and I kind of highlighted it with an asterisk. It's out of order, which is why I highlighted it. This comes from the general application procedures. Meaning the, the section of the land use code that applies to all application types, not just site plans. But this is kind of where the authority for conditions of approval comes from. Um, that ability to attach conditions of approval is also a statutory, uh, enabling act, the. The way zoning and land use is set up in state statutes and given to statutory towns, we have the ability to attach conditions of approval. I pulled this, um, slide in here, um, as a means to highlight. That the decision-making body, in this case on the site plan, the planning commission. Does have the ability in reviewing that application to make, uh, conditions of approval as necessary to bring the proposed development into compliance with the land use code. Or other regulations or to mitigate the impacts of the development to the surrounding properties and streets. Conditions of approval can be discretionary. Sometimes it's obvious, like this label's missing, this setback isn't satisfied. Please submit your, we, we approve it, if you can demonstrate that that can be satisfied, we'll allow you to, to submit your final drawing set with the approval that that is on it. We do that frequently, um, especially where it's. You know, we don't want to delay an applicant a whole month to submit a new revised plan set just to clean up a label. Um, we usually just identify a condition of approval, satisfy these final comments and you, and this is, you know, meets all the development standards. The, a lot of the discretionary piece though is the mitigate the impacts the development can have on surrounding properties and streets. There's more discretion there, staff is usually going to point to, here is an applicable standard defined in your land use code. Or an engineering standard or some other factor, we try to point to, this is why we recommend. This condition of approval, it's based on, um, screening requirements, site plan specifically, screening requirements, there's going to be. Outdoor uses that might be impactful to neighbors, it's still a permitted land use. Um, but there might be some additional screening required to mitigate the effects of views, aesthetics. Um, I think past examples, uh, glare from headlights from vehicles in, in drive-throughs near residential properties, we've required additional screening. That's a very identifiable, there's a real impact of this proposed land use to the adjacent properties and there's a, a reasonable way to solve it. When you look at, um, kind of one, two and three there, uh, talks about that the, number one is that the conditions of approval shall be reasonably related to the anticipated impacts. Of the development, so again, the screening of the headlights, if headlights are going to be shining through windows of adjacent properties when it's. You know, from a drive-through in, in the dark. It's reasonable to require a solid wall, a fence, vegetative screening, something else to, um, to bring that level of lighting down. Um, same thing can be said for, for anticipated noise from that development. Walls and fences do a marvelous job of, of, uh, changing the direction of sound so that it doesn't have the same impacts to. Um, to adjacent properties. Um, sidewalks is another great example, the, um, you're proposing a, a, a land use that has. You know, in our, one of our site criterias that you provide access to, to the public to get, you know, to walk to your business. Um, if there are no sidewalks in that vicinity, it is not uncommon to require sidewalks to be installed to facilitate public access to. An assembly use. Um, so that's the reasonableness standpoint, it has to be, um. I'll, I'll jump in here too, because number, number two gets into, um, a little bit more detail about the rough proportionality. My, uh, planning, uh, tip of the hat to past, uh, Supreme Court land use decisions. Um, there are two very famous cases, um, commonly referred to as the, the Nolan test and the Dolan test. These are cases from other states that they reached the Supreme Court level and were identified as landmark law cases. They're from many years ago, seventies, eighties. Um, but the Nolan and Dolan tests get to these topics, number one and number two. In our land use code. One is that there's, that they're reasonable, reasonably related or the rational nexus test, there has to be an identifiable reason why. We would require that condition of approval. The second part is a rough proportionality. The, there has to be, um. The rough proportionality refers to cost or impact to the applicant to achieve the desired effect. If the, you going back to the same example for, for headlights. A, you installing a, a cedar fence to screen headlights is a reasonable expense roughly proportional to. Um, the impact that it's creating. If the town were to require a twenty foot high, six foot thick block wall to screen headlights. Not very proportional to the impact that it's creating. Um, the, the. In the, um, in the Supreme Court cases I referenced, that rough proportionality was actually related to a Californial, California. Um, coastal commission and they've required a, a significant easement for public access to a beach that was not at all related to. The case that they were presenting, which was, we're trying to build a house on this coastal beachfront property. There was not a rational nexus between public access and their request to build a house, so. These are, you know, some examples that we could go on and on forever and ever, but. Those two central themes have been well vetted throughout land use cases over time, not all of them reach the level of a Supreme Court case. But sometimes they do, more often than not, they're satisfied at the staff level with, we've identified, these are the anticipated impacts. Staff does look for those things on a site plan application, we try to be comprehensive in our approach, we try to be genuine and honest with our applicants that. We anticipate this is going to be a concern. Here is the solution we would propose, if you have other ideas, we're open to those alternatives, our recommendation of the planning commission usually comes through with. This is the recommended condition of approval to mitigate these anticipated impacts. And the third point is, um, essentially to prevent a bait and switch type of scenario where. Oh, of course, we'll provide all of those things here, we've shown how we can do it and then turn around and go, well, as a matter of fact, it was too expensive and we decided we didn't want to do it. Um, it's a kind of a catchall that if you presented as, of course, I told the planning commission I would do this to get my approval, then in fact you have to do it. Um, so that's just kind of a savings language in there. Um, so before we move on, do, are there, this was one of those topics that I think I, I heard direction from the planning commission to kind of put a little bit more emphasis on. What are the conditions of approval to be considered during a site plan review and what's the criteria, how is it applicable and what do you do? Um, so I want to pause from me talking and let the planning commission, do you have questions on this topic or do you want to discuss the application of it amongst yourselves?
I think that was very helpful. Just hearing you. Explain it in detail.
Good, alright.
Maybe you did a better job than you thought.
Maybe, um, you know, I'm, I'm checking the clock because I know we've only got an hour and we've got about fifteen minutes left. Um, so we can definitely circle back to it if you want to, um, when we reach the conclusion, I don't have a whole lot more to go. City of Tygards another one I could throw out there. The Nolan Dolan tests, I, I would be more than happy to put together kind of as a, you know, case study type of stuff to, to share on, on the conclusions of those cases. If that would be desirable, um, we kind of covered it in a nutshell, I could bring the briefs or something else for those cases if that would be helpful.
Send all comments directly to Laura. I, send all comments directly to you.
I, what I can. I, I'm right there with you, um, what I could do is I'll, I'll make myself a note, I, I can get the specific titles of those cases and send them out. There's a lot of information you can get pretty quickly from planning resources online or, or, um. LexisNexis, there's, there's a, a lot of online resources where you can research those cases and I'd be happy to provide. The titles and maybe even a link to where that information is consolidated easily, I can email that out and you can choose to look at it if you'd like.
Just those three is good. Good understanding of the basis on when you submit the conditions for approval. Why and how, so that we don't start going off on tangents about. What about this, what about this, what about this and go too far away from those specific requirements on conditions for approval, just. It's good to know that there is a basis for it and that we need to stick relatively close in line with what. Where the, you know, the guidelines and the requirements are before commissioners start asking too much of applicants that have nothing to do with. Site plans and nothing to do with the nexus you're talking about.
Yeah, and, and that's fair and I, I think it's, it is something that your staff tends to take for granted because we've. Researched some of these past cases that where these things were decided by other, other courts of different jurisdictions. Um, we take a lot of it for granted and, and that it's just kind of commonplace in the way we think about. How to, how to design a site, how do you mitigate and how do you reasonably find alternatives? Um, it's certainly something that we can do a better job of identifying in our staff reports that, you know, this is. I'm not sure, we can, we definitely, and I'm open to suggestions for how you'd like to see that presented, but where something is a, you know, this is a, this is a recommendation of staff. To add a condition of approval, here's what we're looking at, here's the basis for that, our recommendation for rational nexus and rough proportionality or X and Y. I mean, we'd be happy to provide more detail in the staff reports as opposed to just, here's our recommendation for a condition of approval. If that would be useful to the commission.
I love as much information as you want to give, so if you, um, wanted to do that, that'd be fine by me. And I think it's interesting. The more specific things can be without, um. If things are left to interpretation, right, and we don't have this background. And education in the field when looking at the plans, like that, that's why for me it's helpful. Um, to know the train of thought, um, but I'm just speaking for myself.
No, I appreciate that and thanks, I, I was, I'm making notes, so I'm, I'm trying to capture, um, some direction for future applicant, or, um. Staff reports so we can provide that, so thanks for that feedback.
Speaking of nerding out, Cody. We all have these for the comp plan, would it be possible to do this for the land use code?
You want hard copies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
I don't think we anybody, unless you've taken the time, if you're a huge nerd to print it out and carry it around. It would be, I think it would be a good addition to the binder, to have a hard copy of the land use code, just. It, it seems like you're referencing it a lot for these presentations, which is great because it's concise, it's making everything clear and concise. But for reference later, I don't want any of us to have to go back and ask you questions over stuff that's already been presented. If it's just in the land use code, it's a matter of looking it up.
Yep, I, I'm happy to provide hard copies, the, um, myself, I don't actually have a hard copy in my office, I use the online version.
It's big.
It, it's pretty thick, it's, it's around three hundred pages, yeah. Printed double sided. No tabs, no dividers, um.
And it's not colored. I mean, like when you print it, I mean, it has some fixtures, but like the chart is not.
Um, make sure you use your marker for next time Patty. Um, so I'm happy to provide hard copies, I, I myself prefer to use the online municode version, um. I use it a lot because it's searchable, you can do control, find to locate things quickly. And that's the reference that we use, it's codified under, on our municipal code with the same format as the rest of the municipal code. So when you see those references, um, it is specifically to the online version. Um, that we're using and it is a good tool, um, but I'm also, I'm also a paper person, so I understand. Uh, maybe just by a show of hands, who would want a paper copy, um, of that, uh, land use code?
I did, you mentioned that, it would be kind of hard to find stuff in there without tab, that, that's. Have to remember.
Okay, no, and that's fine, um. We're, we're happy to provide you the resources that you want and the format that you'd like it, um, so. There is no, you know, search and find option for the paper versions, but I, I heard at least one. Uh, Chairman Starter, would you like a hard copy?
I was about to say the, just go ahead and send us a link to it and, uh, maybe a resource guide, but you evidently already have. I should have known better.
It is, it's on the homepage of the town's website too, if you click on the municipal code and chapter fifteen is your land use code.
Frequent reminders that it is that easy to find, I think probably suffice.
Okay.
That's a lot of paper.
I can attach it to the email I send out before the meeting, if that helps, kind of at the bottom as a reminder.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, that's several thousand pages that the town doesn't have to pay for printing on if we don't take paper copies, but. Having it as a quick reference would be nice.
You want me to hold off? Okay. Okay, so the.
Unless Bert's going to volunteer to do it.
Um, so what, I, I guess what I'm hearing is maybe, maybe the commissioners want to explore the online. Version a little bit more and then follow up with staff, if you want a hard copy, we're happy to, to get that to you so you have the resources that you want. Um, something else maybe to keep in mind if you're, um, coming to the planning commission meeting, we do bring a hard copy of the comprehensive plan and the land use code. To the meetings so that we can reference them throughout the meeting as we need to, so if anyone is desiring to look at that during the meeting, we have those copies. Or if you're questioning us for staff, we can look it up quickly and easily. Um, so those are your options right now, if you want a hard copy, we'd be happy to get them for you. Um, so kind of, kind of cruising through the last, um, last bit of the, um. Uh, presentation slides here, um, and I, and I will cruise through this for the review and approval process. Um, the planning commission makes the final decision on planning, on, uh, site plans, um, going back to site plan specifically. Um, the planning commission is typically an advisory board, you advise the board of trustees on development applications. Site plan review is one where the planning commission has been given the discretion to approve those, or not admission, to approve those as a final decision. Um, it's a check to make sure that the proposed application is in compliance with development standards. The planning commission knows the standards the best since you are engaged in reviewing and updating the. The land use code, the development standards and you know the comprehensive plan, um, that authority's been given to the planning commission. There is an appeal process if the, if the applicant feels like the planning commission, um, didn't make the right decision. There's a standard and, and a process in place in the code to, uh, for the applicant to appeal that to the board of trustees if they would like to do so. And then kind of moving on to post decision actions and I'll go through this pretty briefly too. Site plan reviews, we typically try to, um. Keep those in such a manner where they don't have to have a specific development agreement or memorandum of agreement for public improvements associated with them. Um, it's usually, site plans don't usually rise to the occasion where that level of detail is necessary, but occasionally it does. For large projects or a specific project that has a lot of infrastructure related to it to serve it. Um, we may do that, that's typically handled by town staff in facilitating that based on. Planning commission direction and recommendations. The, the actual agreement itself, the reason why it's a post-decision action is if the site plan is approved by the planning commission. And then we need to have that development agreement, the planning commission doesn't have authority to approve agreements, only the board of trustees does. So if the, if the project gets approved for a site plan, then staff would take the applicant through the process of writing the terms of that development agreement. For the board to approve the agreement based on the site plan.
So, uh, when you're talking about the MOAPI, would something like, uh. The second phase of Sage Homes, because again, it has drainage, it has sewer and all that, would that? Would that might fall into that or is that project not really big enough to do, to trigger this? Post-decision action and the development agreement, just curious.
Can you, can you help me be more specific on the second phase of Sage Homes, which, which project are you?
It's a, it's a phase just north of, uh, maybe I'm not using the right term, it's the, the, the phase that they're paving the roads right now. It looks like they've got most of the infrastructure.
Yeah, so, um, Sage Home second subdivision, that's a residential subdivision, residential's not subject to site plan review. So the subdivision plat was approved for that project a number of years ago, I don't recall the specific year offhand, my apologies. But the, the subdivision plat was approved, it out, it approved the street alignments, the lot and block dedications. It had a landscape plan associated with that for the open spaces, trail alignments, things like that. That subdivision plat's residential, so that plat satisfied that approval process. The individual homes don't have to have a site plan review because it's, um, a plot plan that's reviewed by staff administratively. For construction in accordance with applicable setbacks, building codes, et cetera. The, the project that, that Commissioner Whitehouse referenced does have two commercial lots associated with it. Um, at the, be the northwest corner along highway one, there's an, uh, old farmhouse and a blue barn there. There's two, two and a half acre lots there that are zoned commercial, those to redevelop for commercial purposes would go through a site plan process. So to kind of wrap things up here, um, for procedures, if a site plan is approved, then town staff can proceed to. Building permit, um, review and issuance, construction and then certificates of occupancy for those structures. So the site plan process is a precursor to those, uh, procedure steps. Then in C, or fifteen dash two dash one twenty C is the findings for approval. You've gone through this one before in the past, I don't want to spend a tremendous amount of time here, but these are outlined in the land use code. This slide is copy and paste directly from the code, um, but these are the, the findings, um, in a site plan review. If, if all of these are satisfied, then reasonably, or maybe with conditions of approval, that site plan would be approved. That's the basis for it, it creates, um, for applicants some, some consistency of what's going to be. What's the standard for the review, what is the planning commission and staff going to be looking at? An expectation that if those are reasonably satisfied, that they're going to get the approval for that set of site plans. So consistency, fairness, equitability, all those, uh, concepts are kind of embodied and this is what we're looking for to make sure that that site plan is. Going to check the boxes and get approval, you can see that, um, number six on this list. Um, that the applicable development standards are adequately addressed in accordance with article five. As you know from your land use code, article five is a really long section, it's got photometrics, landscaping, signs. A whole, a whole host of other topics, so it's a lot of detail to review for one simple, you know, two-line statement. But that's where that checklist, um, that we shared earlier comes into play, that's everything that's getting reviewed, that is identifying if those provisions are satisfied. In accordance with article five, so it's a big checkbox, but it's one that if they're reasonably satisfied, the applicant would expect approval. And then the last piece here, amendments to approved site plans, this is a post-decision action, um, identified in the land use code. After the planning commission approves a site plan, um, if, if there's a, a field adjustment that's needed based on, uh. A surprise, we didn't realize that there was a, a buried utility line that didn't get marked in the, the eight-one-one ticket for, for dig safe. We've got to move this tree twenty feet this way to avoid a conflict with that utility. Staff has the authority within ten percent of a measurable standard to approve field adjustments on an approved site plan. It gives a little bit of wiggle room for, shoot, how do we make this work without having to bring, you know, stop a construction project and bring it back to the planning commission? For reconsideration, it gives staff a little attitude to work with the applicant. Number two, if it exceeds that ten percent, that staff doesn't have administrative approval to, to work with an applicant on it. It comes back to the planning commission for review, um, to adjust those, those changes that are being considered. And lastly, um, the amendments to a site plan, if a site plan's already been approved. Whether it were, you know, recently or a couple of years ago and significant changes are being proposed to that site, even though the use might not be changing. It identifies a path that it, it's not just a sweeping under the rug and it gets approval and staff can issue a building permit. If it's a substantive change, it comes back to the planning commission for review for those elements that are being changed. I hurried through that last part and, uh, as a matter of timeliness, but are there any questions I can answer on site plan review procedures? Or would you provide direction for things we can bring back and, and help inform more on these topics?
I think the site plan portion was well covered. I think individually, if we have questions, you can probably reach out, but I don't think it's worth another, another work session, especially not an hour-long work session.
Okay, thank you for that, are there any other questions? If you, and if you do have questions, feel free to share them my way, if, if it's a, if the response is, is, you know, good for everyone, I'll certainly copy all the planning commissioners. On the response so you can all see the question and the answers.
But what's the agenda for March, do you have another kind of installment in the series, ready to go for March or is, that's something we need to figure out tonight?
I have not gotten that far, that might be a good, um, thing to cover, since we're moving into the regular meeting, maybe in the communications portion. We can discuss if there are other, or what the next topics for work sessions might look like.
Yeah, guys, think about that by the time we get to the end of the regular meeting, um, anything else for the work session?
From staff.
LexisNexis and Nolan Dolan, uh.
I, I will provide that up.
She asked what she missed.
We will go ahead and end the work session and let's take five minutes since, in case the.